Call the meeting in order for the Ashland Board of Commissioners for our Tuesday, April the 8th, 2025 meeting. If you all will stand, we'll have invocation by Commissioner Goot and we'll ask Haley Wertz and Cade Potter if they'll come up and help Mr. Wertz in doing the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Lord, we ask and invite your Holy Spirit into our chambers to preside over our meeting this evening. We're thankful for our city and how you blessed us in recent days. We're thankful for our guests this evening, the Action Club, and the great volunteer work that they do in our community. Bless their efforts as they go forward and as they serve our city and our area. This evening, as we always do, we ask for your wisdom and guidance on this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its citizens. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance this evening. We pray always, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Goot, and thank you Haley and Cade for helping Mr. Wertz continue with our pledge. All right. A motion to receive and file the agenda as presented?
So move.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. As you can see, we have some special guests in our midst, and I would like to ask Karen Wertz to come to the podium and if you'll state your name and your address first, but want to introduce our Action Club of the Ashland Tri-State. I won't steal all your thunder, but they hold a little special dear to my heart and wanted to recognize them today and their work in our community. Ms. Wertz?
Well, my name's Karen Wertz. I'm from Boyd County, Outland County. We have our meetings at Cornerstone Methodist Church in South Ashland on, I think it's 29th Street? Is that?
That's right.
Anyway, so I'm one of the advisors for the club along with Tina Potter, DeNan, and Fannie Mays, and we've been together for about a year. We started about a year ago. The Action Club is a community service club for adults with special needs, 18 years and older. The Action Club mission is to provide adults living with disabilities an opportunity to develop initiative leadership skills and to serve their community. The Action Club was started about a year ago, and we are so proud of all the things that we've accomplished in this year. Just for example, a few of the things are, we volunteered for the City of Ashland Repair Affair last year, and we're hoping to join forces and do something again this year. We've helped with the free lunch program that's at Advanced Methodist Church in Flatwoods. We served for that a couple times in July of last year. We provided 12 food baskets for Fairview School Systems for Thanksgiving last year. We provided items needed for the weekend backpack program at Pogue Elementary, and then we volunteered for the annual Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast fundraiser. Just to name a few of the things. We keep growing and keep wanting to do more community service in our, in our community. So if you have any projects or anything that you all need the Action Club to help with, we would love to help. And if you have any family members that would like to join, or friends, or just anyone that you know that would like to join the Action Club, you know, just send out my information or forward them to our Facebook page. We'd love to have them join. And we're so thankful for all the support of Mayor Charles, the City Commissioners, and all of the residents of Ashland and even the tri-state area, because everyone has just been so good to us and welcomed us with open arms, and we're so thankful. And we're blessed to live in such a wonderful community. So we're really appreciative. And thanks for having us here today. We love it.
Would you want to introduce the officers at least?
Yes, our officers of the Action Club. President is Ashley Lane.
Hi.
Vice President is Erica Roberts. Secretary is Brandon Webb, sitting back here. And our treasurer, she's not here tonight, but it's Taylor Hotten. And when Taylor's not available, Michael Sorrell steps in and helps us out. And he's sitting right here beside Ben. So...
Last year, they helped us stuff some of the Easter eggs, you know, probably a couple thousand of them, I guess.
We did, yeah.
Probably going to need to help this year to dig in, but I know the, this Action Club is the largest, get me if I'm wrong, is the largest this type of club in the Bluegrass. So I mean, that is quite an accomplishment from Ashland, Kentucky. And it's because of you guys.
Well, we'd like to, our president would like to say a few words, Ashley Lane. So we'll let her speak.
Kate, Karen, pull that mic down for her. Thank you.
I can come up.
Can you come farther?
There's one right here.
Help me win. Okay.
Can you hold it for me?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, hold on just a second. Oh, wow. Look, guys, I have a microphone. Better watch out. Hi, my name's Ashley Lane. I'm from Ashland and right here in Boyd County as well. And I just want to say what a privilege it is to be here with all of you all today, and thank you all for having us. I've been entrusted to Action Club since last February, and Karen and Tina roped me in basically, and it was, and we're like, hey, do you want to do this? We think you'd be a great leader. So I've had the opportunity to make connections with a variety of people in the area and do a lot of projects that have been very close to my heart. And I just recently got a job with the Kentucky Statewide Independent Living Council. So I have been, I've been able to rope people in that way and just expand my resume. So I just have enjoyed being a part of this organization and all the friends that I've made. And I would ask to share my favorite memory of being with the Action Club. I would have to say the, the daffodil extravaganza at the park. Seeing that was real beautiful and like honoring enormous memory, seeing her, seeing all the pretty flowers and things and hoping that'll be a tradition going forward. So thank you all for having me, and you have a wonderful blessed rest of your day.
I'm so proud of you guys that, and I don't give these out very often, but I want to give you all the key to the city, because all the work that you do in the community really brings us all together. And you all are so much a part of us that we want to recognize you as a commission. And I want to, I'll give it to your president, but it's for all of you all. But congratulations. If you all would like to leave, that's, that's fine. We'll get into the kind of the business of today.
Thank you guys so much.
All right.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you very much. They're a good kid. I keep calling them kids. They're all dogs. We'll change that. Oh, yeah. I'm Chuck. Yeah, I helped you sell peanuts that day. See ya. You be take care, everybody. Oh, I don't, I don't do that anymore. Yep. He knows anything and everything. Got dates and blue was there, if it was raining or whatever. Oh, I enjoy it. See ya.
Never forget a name. He come in and said, "Too many for us." Well, he come in and said, "That's Tim up there." I see.
All right. See you, guys. Dude, that's all over the crowd.
We have two people up here.
But they're all going to try to ride down.
Be like, wow. Wonder how many we have, maybe thirty, forty?
He's doing good. They released him from the hospital late last night. So he's going to be off for a week or so. And they're going to put him on cholesterol medicine. They said he has a 50% blockage in one of his arteries. But with protocols, it's 60% or 65% greater than it's ten, but anything below that does.
He escaped that one.
Escaped, yeah. It was scary. Scary for, for a little bit.
We'll start with you if you want to. All right, we'll continue with our, our hearings and reports and with Commissioners' reports, and we can start with Commissioner Reimer.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for being here today. What a wonderful time it was with the Action Club of Ashland or the tri-state. That was actually, it's only the second Action Club in the entire state of Kentucky.
Right.
And it is the largest, but on another note of positivity, I received this message on Thursday and said, "Hey, Commissioner Reimer, I wanted to share an amazing encounter with you. Monday is our trash day. As we were leaving Monday morning, the trash men pulled in." This, this individual son, his name's Noah, and he said Noah is absolutely obsessed with the trash trucks. Anyways, he says, he goes on to say, "I didn't get the guy's name, but he was a younger man in his early twenties. He was fantastic with Noah. Talked to him, showed him the trucks and how they worked, and he even went as far as let him move the levers." He said he truly made Noah's day and that he wanted just to say thank you and to pass along positive news and impact. This, this address, I can get the address to Mr. Murray, but you know, I think we need to commend those guys. We have great staff all around the city. This is just one time that we've heard of this, but it's, it's been over the years. It's, you know, sanitation is one of the hardest working and most beloved individuals in our community. I think that's all I got. I do want to mention that today would have been Mayor Gilmore's 82nd birthday, I believe.
Wow. All right. Mr. Metrow?
Very little mayor, just thanks for everybody coming out. This is the largest crowd we've had since we went to the afternoon meetings. And I mean, even after the Action Club left, we still have a pretty much packed house. So appreciate you all.
All right. The only one I have in addition to is we probably ought to congratulate Ashley Fletcher for her appointment as General Manager of the Daily Independent. We sent her an email and wished her well, and I know the city can help her out in any way we can, we will. All right, Commissioner Martin?
Thanks for being here tonight. That's all I've got.
Gotcha.
Thanks for being here on this evening meeting. The only thing I have is just remember April 19th, which is a week from this Saturday. We're going to have our annual Easter egg hunt at Central Park. It'll start at 11 o'clock. And then, of course, and, and I think the Action Club is packing eggs. I mean,
Yes, they are.
They packed eggs for that. And Repair Affair is May the 17th coming up next month. And our front door is just about completed. Thank you for anybody that had a hand in that of getting our front door completed. It's a very expensive kind of a, a deal. I'm thinking about, we ought to have a ribbon cutting, Mayor, for that,
I know.
For that front door. But that's all I have.
They're laying those brick actually tomorrow.
Be good. That'll be good.
Keeping a check on it. All right, City Manager?
The front door should be completed on the 16th.
16th.
On the 16th.
Okay.
Commissioner Reimer, if you'll give me Noah's address, we'll send him a job application.
Certainly.
We do have an after-action report on the DeBoort Hill tank leak. It'll be given to us by Director Hall.
I want to say thank you for that birthday, President. My birthday's the 16th, so that'd be good to have the doors open. Thanks for that notification.
Okay. Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, just want to touch on, like the City Manager mentioned, about the actual, after-action review on, on the DeBoort Hill water line leak there. If you can see, it's kind of small on your screen up there, but you can see the tank sort of in the middle to the left of center and some blue lines coming up through there. Those blue lines represent both a 24-inch and a 36-inch water line, ductile iron water line. The 24 would be the upper, the line that's more northeastern. It's hard to see on there, but there are a, a couple of purplish reddish dots to the north of the tank, northeast of the tank. Those, those two locations actually mark the starting, the tie-in points of the 24-inch line that we, that we replaced there. Those are actually concrete restraints that are put in there for, that are used based on the, the type of material that we use to make this, this repair. So to kind of touch on a little bit of the, of what actually happened to get us to that point, we had the, the 36-inch line started leaking, and we had contacted a contractor to come and make the repairs. It's very large, too big of a, of a section of pipe for our guys to work on effectively. So we had a contractor coming in to make that repair. And in the meantime, between the time before the contractor had actually come and made the repair, there's quite a bit of water that was leaking out, not, not necessarily this much at that time. But it did start to cause the ground to move a little bit in that area, causing those pipes to shift, which started causing an issue with the 24-inch main that actually is the one that you're seeing leaking right here that's, that's looking so bad. Like I said, you can see the, the picture to the left is actually over the hill where the water's running off the hill down towards US 23. The one in the middle was earlier on in the leak, and right here on the right side was right before we got the water shut off. If you, if you want to go to the next slide, that was the issue with repairing this leak was actually getting the water shut off. That was the biggest issue. We do have valving in the area that typically we, we would be able to shut that off, but when we shut those valves off, evidently our valve towards the bottom of the hill up on 23 was leaking through significantly. So we couldn't get the water shut off to make the repairs. And what you see here on the left side of the screen is actually an apparatus called a line stop. And without going into too many details, you can take that, that, the green portion of that stays on the pipe, and there's an actual gate that slides down into the, to the pipe that shuts the water off. And this is kind of a, like a down and dirty emergency type situation where, not emergency, but it's, it's a way to go in there and shut the water off when you don't have a valve in place. There's better options for long term, but this was the best option to get it done quickly and cost effectively to shut the water off. So once we got the water shut off and we weren't being drowned up there at the top of the hill, you can see to the right there on the top, that's the, that's the gap in between two sections of pipe that, that was, appeared there on the 24-inch main. That's where the majority of the water was coming out. And then the lower right section just shows both sections of pipe right there, the 36 and the 24, and you can see some repair bands on there. One that was an existing one on the, on the larger pipe, had been there for many years. And then the other one, we tried to put on to hopefully stop this before it got worse than what it did. Let you go. Next slide, please. But here is a, a section of, of the pipe that we used to replace the existing pipe with. This is a 24-inch fused polyethylene pipe. Some of you probably have seen this very similar pipe on, if you see the gas company working, you see that big roll of yellow or orange pipe they use. Very similar material. It works really well in this application where we had to drag this down over the hill. And you know, it's kind of, it's, it's a steep bank, and it'll, it allows you to make one solid section of pipe, pull it in place, and make the connections on either side. I mentioned the concrete retain, restraints that were, had to be poured. The reason being is, is when you use this type of pipe, that material wants to move a lot in the ground and moves more than like the ductile iron. So to basically secure the existing pipe and, and stop that movement from pulling the other pipe around, you have to pour those restraints in place. But this is an excellent way to do the, do the repairs. And the contractor we used was, CJ Hughes was, was excellent. They were very responsive and able to, to do this quickly. Really fast work, and this is something that they're, they're very well-versed in this type of work. On the right is just today. I ran up there today. I wanted to take a picture of what it looks like today. Really, you can't see anything other than down over the hill. We still have to go up and do some, some final dress-ups up there. We want to get grass growing back up there so we don't have that hill slip on us. But so far, so good. Let me make sure that I, I think I've kind of touched on everything.
When we put the emergency valve in there to shut the water off, do we now have a valve there that can be shut off?
Yes, what, yes, what we have, though, it's not a valve like you would think. We could just go up there and turn the handle and use it to this. That's kind of the inconvenience of, of doing this type. It's called a line stop. Part of that apparatus stays in, on the pipe, but to actually go, ever go back there and shut that off, we have to get that contractor to come in and put that blue, blue piece back on top to shut it down. So it's not ideal, but it's, was the best, best way to shut the water off in that situation and be able to do the work.
Well, thank you for all that. I think, you know, all of us commend all, everybody that's been a part of this, because it could have been a whole lot worse. And I mean, it drained an entire tank.
Yes, and one thing I forgot to mention about that tank, that tank is, is key to our distribution system. It's actually part of the clear well from the, from the water plant. So it's, it's important for the, it's, it's important for their disinfection, the disinfection system. And it also is, is a, it's the high point in, in the system, so it provides pressure throughout the system. It was believed that when we shut that tank down, that we were going to basically lose half of our, our customers, and that didn't happen. So we've, we've made quite a few So we've made quite a few upgrades over the year with, over the years with our distribution system by putting in some redundant transmission lines. And we feel that that's the only thing that we can attribute it to, is some of the upgrades we've made over the years have made a significant difference in not causing the problems that we thought we were going to have.
Well, well done.
Any other questions?
Mike, what was your final tally on what this cost us?
The actual, so we estimated that it was going to be $150,000, $160,000 in the invoice that I just got over on the fused pipe that we pulled over the hill. I think it was right at, I wrote it down here, sorry. I think it was $115,000, $113,000. And then the repair that we had to make to the 36 that we had an outstanding PO on, that was $6,400, and it was a significant savings because we already had the contractor, we used the same contractor instead of the other contractor that we had. They already had their equipment immobilized and all that, so we were able to save on that also. So some silver linings to a pretty bad situation. Didn't cost quite as much as what we thought, and we were able to restore water without anybody having any issues.
Did that include the contractor pit to stop valve in?
I don't have that. I don't have that. But it was, I'd have to get back with you on the cost for that.
Well, it's our people that really made the difference, you know, worked so diligently on it and day and night on it, you know, and bring the situation like that under control.
Yeah, but both our employees and also the contractor, they worked around the clock to get this done. So it was definitely a team.
Pass on our gratitude.
And not just, not just the utility guys, but people all throughout the city. We had street department, police, fire. We had elected officials. There were so many people involved, it was definitely a team effort, so.
Here we need help, all you do is ask, and that's what you get out of this city.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any other?
No, sir.
All right.
Not for right now.
We'll move to public participation. If anyone would like to address the commission, you can come to the podium and state your name and address. You'll have five minutes to make your statement. Anybody that would like to address the commission? Okay, hearing none, we'll move into old business. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up.
Spoke the other day about the new convention center and...
You'll state your name and your address for the clerk.
Victor Wilson, 1111 First Circle Prospect, Ashland, 41101. I spoke the other day about the convention center and John Hunt being the humble person that he is, I don't think is, would come forward with it. But, you know, New York City is known for the Statue of Liberty. And I think in many people's minds, Ashland is known for the Paramount. And John's suggestion, which I think he may have emailed to you, is that it be called the Paramount Arts and Convention Center. And this is playing off of what we're known for to begin with, which is the Paramount Arts Center. And I just think that would have a positive impact on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Yes, sir.
I updated my list.
Sure.
I'm John Hall, 1337 Winchester Avenue. I'm the rector at Calvary Episcopal Church. And like Victor, I've spoken before, this list is, I've really been trying to pare it down to as simple a list as possible. So this is kind of my David Letterman Top 10 list here. And eight and nine, if you want to draw a circle around those and think about those, those are things that are a little more fine-tuned from previous times I've spoken. Wondering, number eight, and I said something to the effect before that we would support whatever was decided by you all. That was with a connotation that there would be due diligence for all the facts and all the plans, which I trust that you all will address and do your homework and so forth. I've learned since that there's been, and I could be wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I heard was that there was plans that are already drawn up for the Paramount side, but not plans drawn up for the 14th Street side project, if it was done between the church and the hotel. So I wasn't sure if that was true, if these engineering plans were going to be funded on the front end or maybe taken out of the grant, thus compromising some of the building on the back end of that project. And then number nine, I just wanted to stress that several of you, which I greatly appreciate, have spoken about Calvary Church with affection. And we tend to talk about the church in terms of the building, the historical building, especially in this case. But the church, as I know and love it, is also about the people and the ministries that come in and out every day. So access takes on an added connotation there. And we've been through a lot with the last year and a half with Winchester Avenue construction. I like the way it looks now, my two cents. But it's still not finished. And for a long time, over a year, there was access for some of our most challenged churchgoers. I don't see how, even if 14th Street's not built upon, not physically encroached upon, that there wouldn't be still a great deal of disruption to access of parking for handicapped spots and also just normal traffic. It's not only churchgoers, but that's why I'm here. But it's the people that live in the apartments down the alley. That one little section is used a lot. It has a lot of traffic on it. And I don't, I don't know what the answer would be to that, except people to go through the bridge side of the alley, which I don't think would really be feasible, quite frankly. But there's businesses and apartments back there that I think are also worth mentioning and worth being considered, even if they're not here to physically speak. And I know that I don't represent them, but it adds to the congestion that's already there. So anything, even blocking off 14th temporarily, I think would have to be considered as a significant disruption to the life of the church as well.
We appreciate your comments.
I appreciate you.
Most of those drawings that you saw, pretty much just footprint drawings at this point.
Yeah.
We've not got into the details of those drawings at all.
So this is my chance to just offer what I can. And I appreciate your time and looking at these different options.
We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Father John.
Yes, sir. All right, any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move to old business, item A.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Light Enterprises, Inc. for the Purchase of All Labor Materials, Equipment, and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris at 1933 Central Avenue in the Amount of $9,200 for the Department of Community Economic Development to be Paid from the General Fund."
Let me interject with this. I think there's been some...
If you get a second, then we can do discussion.
And I can update you guys on the status. Okay, all right. We have a first and a second. All right. I'd like to move that we table this. I understand that there's still a possibility that there can be some action on this without removing the building. You want to add?
Yes, I was just going to say, staff is requesting, and more specifically, I'm requesting that if you all would please consider tabling this until the May 13th meeting. I've had discussions with a potential buyer, with Mr. Quady. I believe he may be getting his own counsel to work through a few things as well, but not in a hostile way with the city. There's just some finer points that we don't need to go into right now, but need to be ironed out for Mr. Quady to maybe make this work out. But I think there is a very legitimate chance that it could work out and just not something that legally could be worked out within a couple of weeks.
So move to table of the May 13th.
First that we table, second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item B.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit the City of Ashland's 2019 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan Amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Approval and Implementation."
So move.
Second.
First, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit the City of Ashland's 2020 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan Amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Approval and Implementation."
So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item D.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit the City of Ashland's 2023 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan Amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Approval and Implementation."
So move.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item E.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting the Community Development Block Grant Amended Five-Year Consolidation Plan 2020 through 2024 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda.
A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting, Authorizing, and Approving the Course of Action Presented by the City Manager on the Items Appearing on the Consent Agenda for the Regular Meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of April 8, 2025.
So move.
Second.
I have a number that I'd like to discuss.
Okay. Once sustained, all in favor, say aye.
I want to... I think there's a...
We had something we want to discuss.
Yeah.
All right.
There was a motion and a second, right? Okay. There's a motion and a second, so go ahead and discuss.
This, on item number two, we've got final design and bidding engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Are we, Mr. City Manager, as a result of this, ready to go to bid with this project?
I think that is the case. I think that is the final payment. I'd request Director Hall to make a comment, add some context to it.
So yes, there's a couple of outstanding items ready to go to bid, but for the most part, it is ready to go to bid. The, we're finalizing some insurance requirements for the contractor at this time. There's a document that I've passed on to our underwriter at KLC to get their advice on this, considering it's such a significant project, we want to make sure that we're insured properly. I just talked to the engineer this morning, and one of the things that they're currently working on is, given the new climate with tariffs, they're looking at some changes to the bid documentation to make sure that neither us as the owner or the contractor takes on too much risk. So we can put a line item in the bid specifications or something that allows, you know, if an item, if a tariff is 20% at this time, but when we actually go to the time of, like at bid, but then at the actual time of purchase, it's zero or it went to 40, there's an allowance to be put in there. Let's hope that none of this impacts us, but, you know, we want to allow for that. Also, as far as what was actually detailed in February, like I said, they're still working on the final bid documents. If you remember, we had the presentation here to the commission and then the trip to the sewer plant to actually kind of update everybody on the process. And then they also have been working on some, Strand also worked on some finalizing some purchase agreements for some of the pre-selected equipment that we purchased for the treatment plant. That would include the blowers, the centrifuges, and the generator. And these items were pre-purchased because of the long lead time. So we wanted to get those items and we also, that looks like that's going to be an advantage too, if there's, that proved to be something that was a hidden gem that we weren't aware of, that we have that equipment purchased ahead of time.
Right.
Any other questions, Mayor, Commissioners?
I have a comment about number eight on the consent agenda, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Renfro for spearheading the initial conversations with the Boyd County Detention Center for Lawn Care of the Ashland Cemetery. That will ultimately save vital tax dollars here in the community.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Reimer, unlike, and I'm sure this isn't meant to be no fiscal impact, it actually has some significant fiscal...
But it's positive.
In a positive way. I mean, we're not able to estimate it maybe at this time, but it is a significant benefit to the community. And I thank you for your efforts, Commissioner.
Well, it's a win-win for us and the jail. They needed some projects for their inmate work program, and so hopefully it worked out well.
Another item on the, that I'd like some discussion of, Mr. City Manager's item number four. I'm not sure exactly what this is.
Sure. We're going to have Director of Engineering Barry Atkins come up, and I'd like for him to lend some context to items four, five, and six, if you don't care, please.
Yeah, well, I'm glad all of those are...
I was trying to beat you.
You beat me.
Yeah, absolutely.
Adiant.
So for item five, the Safe Streets for All Act, that is basically a project to create a safety action plan for the City of Ashland. It's basically to evaluate areas within the city that have high vehicular accidents reported. It's at $200,000 and it's a grant agreement between us and the federal government, and it's on an 80/20 split. City pays 20% for that one. So I don't know if I need questions on safe streets or... Okay.
This is a grant that is funding this deal?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes.
What was, what generated the request for this action?
That's a great question. I'm entirely not...
It was before you got here, obviously.
Yes, it was before I got here. I sort of inherited the project, so. Okay.
You can go ahead to five and six if you want.
Yes, sir. So item five is the sidewalks. So this is actually, pay request number 10 is the final pay application. Our previous meeting last Tuesday, I think we got final reading of the final adjusting change order for the project. And this 80, this $83,000 charge, that was basically just to close out the project for traffic control, mobilization, erosion and water control, and then any retainage that was withheld during the project.
I wonder if later on, we might get a detailed reconciliation of how this money's been spent. I know all of us have witnessed various concrete projects around town, and I know we all are aware of the existing policy in the community of 75/25, the city bearing 75 and the owner bearing 25 of the cost. And I also know that in the past, we've created lists and all that. So I'd kind of like to see a rehash of how that money's been spent. Been a lot of money, a million dollars is a lot of money. And that's not one year, I understand. How many years does that represent, Barry, do you know?
I think phase two is just for one year. Yes, yeah, for one year.
Two years? Is that what? Two years, is that what?
It's one, we did say one last year.
It's in the second year, two years, okay.
And I have a, I have a list of all the streets that were put on the original list at the time of bid, and I can print that off for-
And sidewalks?
Yes, yes, for anyone that'd like to see-
Did you have a list of people that actually paid their 25%?
No, no, not a list of people that paid 25%. The original list that the engineering department put together on what they determined were sidewalks that needed to be replaced out of the, out of the budget.
So it's, I, I was talking to Mr. Atkins about this earlier. It's a little bit like the paving program where the city goes around and they look at various sidewalks that are needing replacement during regular course and maintenance. And then if your sidewalk or resident or property owner wishes to go outside that normal schedule, they can pay, like, it's 75-25% basis in requests that they, you know, they have their sidewalk or, or cut out, or whatever it may be, be taken care of outside the city's normal schedule.
It appears to me that there have been a good number of commercial properties that have benefited from this program, and I'd just like to see, you know, what, what that boiled down to.
I'm sure Mr. Breeding and, and your department's been here throughout the duration of it. He, he'd probably be the best source for that information. He could probably provide that to the commission relatively easily, don't you think, Barry?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Barry. And the item six?
Item six, so the city entrance steps, I think this was talked on a little bit earlier.
This will be finished on the 16th, right?
Yes, yes, and I actually have a little itemized report put together of the remaining items that we have.
Does it show when the project began and kind of give a chronology of things?
I do not have one of those put together, but I absolutely can put, start to finish, put together. I have a list put together of what we have from now to completion. I've spoke with Mead Construction, and they've relayed that they expect that we can open the steps to the public no later than this upcoming Wednesday. So, next week.
Every year of the work.
Thanks.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll move into old business, or new business.
Mayor, before we get there, there's one additional item for consent that staff would request your consideration. This is a budgeted item. It's due to the timing of the invoice and the timing of the meetings that just didn't get on the agenda. City manager recommends authorizing payment of invoice SIN 07177 dated March 25, 2025, then the amount of $57,110 to Magnet Forensics LLC, formerly Gray Shift, for renewal of the Law Enforcement Analysis Support Service subscription for a period of one year for the Ashland Police Department. This is a device, just to give you some background, law enforcement analysis services to solve crimes. It's a sole-source item, and is needed to continue APD's digital forensic laboratory, and it is a budgeted item.
So this is like a program, I think, that I saw, okay.
Move to amend the consent agenda to add that item to the consent agenda.
Second to that.
Second to that, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Add that to it. All right, hearing no other items, we'll move to new business, item A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Repealing Orders Number 184 Series of 2024, Which Authorized a Contract Between the City of Ashland and Light Enterprises, Inc. for the Demolition of Property Located at 1213 Gallagher Drive for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number One Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and CTB, Inc. for the Ashland Senior Center Storefront Rehabilitation Project, Increasing the Contract in the Amount of $2,391.45 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending the Job Description for the Position of Captain in the Department of Police of the Classification and Compensation Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 31 Series of 2023, as previously amended."
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Repealing Orders Number 151 Series of 2023, as previously amended, which established the Ashland Conference Center Advisory Committee for the City of Ashland, Kentucky."
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item E.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Addendum to the Purchase Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and the Paramount Arts Center, Inc., permitting the Paramount Arts Center, Inc. to continue to operate and lease the theater through December 31, 2025."
I've, I've got a question about this.
Oh, you need a motion?
Motion and a second, first.
You have a motion?
Second.
All right, discussion?
I'd like to strike number 23 of that, of that contract about the removal of a plaque on the front of the building.
I think it's already had.
Yeah, the, the draft that was, that was attached today, it's, it's been stripped.
It doesn't have it on it.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Along those lines, when are we going to discuss the proposals for the operation of the... Is that coming up anytime soon?
We can probably start discussing that as soon as you all would like.
We've got them, we've had them for a while, and had opportunity to review it. I think something we ought to start kicking around.
Yeah, maybe next couple of meetings, we'll do that.
And it ties into the lease. I mean, we've extended them another six months. I mean, we need to make decisions.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item F.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number One Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Everett J. Prescott, Inc. for the Installation of Insertion Valves for the U.S. 23 Waterline Replacement Project, Decreasing the Contract Amount by $6,612.65 and Increasing the Contract by 139 Days to June 5, 2025, for the Department of Engineering."
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item G.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and HDR Engineering, Inc. for Engineering Services for the Optimization and Growth Distribution System Modeling Project in the Amount Not to Exceed $222,128 for the Department of Utility Operations."
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, what is this?
This is a, the, the $222,000 is, is a, is an amount that was left over from a contract that we were using for the 13th street, 13th street tank project. We were determining, trying to determine whether the tank could be brought back online to be used, whether we could add a new tank. Reason being why this was such a, a big issue for us is we wanted to have something to be able to be a backup to, to Board Hill, when we were concerned that we wouldn't be able to do maintenance on it. So this is a long answer to get, get to the, to your actual question, Commissioner. But long story short is what we found was that we don't need, we don't need that tank in service currently until we have extra demand at the, for instance, at the old West Works property. Until we're selling more water, we don't need to bring that tank back online or install a new tank. And with what we found out from the leak, it's also not a big concern if we need to get in there now and work on the Board Hill tank. So, to, all that being said, the leftover amount of that contract, what we were wanting to do is appropriate those funds towards looking at modeling the system to try to, to try to get more water to East Park specifically. Also, we've had requests from Canonsburg Water about getting more water to them. So what upgrades need to be done? HDR can actually run our water model and determine where the choke points are, what, what needs to be upgraded to be able to deliver more water out to East Park. Because we have had, in the, in the, in the, in the, here recently, we've had quite a few people have contacted us about, hey, can you deliver X amount of water out to East Park in the event that, you know, a new industry or something moves out there? So we're, we're trying to be proactive to make sure that if someone wants to move out there to buy, be a large purchaser of water, that we could sell it to them. We can make the water, no problem. We need to be able to deliver it out there.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, we need to do what we can to especially spur some economic development, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item H.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number 3A, Project Item Number 9-244, and Change Order Number 3B, Project Item Number 9-307, Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Howard Excavation LLC for the Winchester Avenue Improvements Project, Increasing the Contract in the Amount of $449,139 for the Department of Engineering."
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Wheeler, is this to cover those items that were identified that were authorized without board approval?
In, in part, yeah, I believe it is. There may be some additional clarification that, and additional items that may come to you in the coming weeks to mu, to next month or so. Our Department of Engineering is working closely with those groups, and Palmer Engineering, they're very close to final walkthrough and resolving the downtown project.
And this is 80% from the state grant and 20% from city money, is that correct?
That's my understanding. It's an 80, 80-20 match with COBA, and I believe Ms. Beach is working on requesting the funding.
Is that for, is that 80-20 still standing, when it goes over and beyond what?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have the money?
Yeah, are we getting that money?
We would have to be approved from COBA, but evidently they've asked before and been approved. We just now got the change order announced. We have more coming, so I've not asked for it yet because I don't know what the total amount will be. But I've told the lady that helps us that we will be asking for more money.
Okay, but there is no guarantee?
There is.
Okay. This keeps getting better.
But the work has been done.
Work's been done.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Are we at the point where we, there are no more items that haven't come before the board for authorization?
Mr. asked that last time, and, and nobody knew.
Do we know?
As far as I can tell, there is nothing remaining of major substance. Mr. Atkins, if you can help me out with this part, except for the landscaping issues. The majority of the electrical issues that we were dealing with, the electrical contractor in connection with AEP, appear to have been resolved. And both us and the, and staff and Howard have been talking, doing walkthroughs and those type of activities. So as far as I know, and what I've been able to piece together from this, there's no more items that are hanging out there that we aren't 100% sure or accounted for and where they came from. It's, but there, most of this has been more recent. You know, it, it did seem to be that the, I don't know if you could say the project was stalled out by weather, but there wasn't a lot of activity downtown. You could drive down there for, for some time. So really, more the more recent activity is what's coming before us now, and...
All right, and then item I.
The mayor requests the board's concurrence on the appointment of Lori Nykirk to the Code Enforcement Board for a three-year term beginning April 8th, 2025, and expiring April 7th, 2028.
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other items that need to come from the commission? Hearing none, we stand adjourned.